Okay, we'll let the public get a chance to get back in and get seated. If everybody comes back and finds their favorite seat that they'd marked on earlier, we'll just let everybody come in before we start with the National Anthem. Okay, it looks like everybody's back in the room, so we'll move on with our meeting. And just now that you're comfortably seated, I will ask everyone to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. Could I have a motion for the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move the adoption of the previous council minutes.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Everyone's had a chance to review that set of minutes. Does it look like there are any errors or omissions that we need to catch before we adopt them? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Counselor Thiessen?
I'm catching up to miss time here, but I move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Again, seeing nobody, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody to come forward and address council on any community matter, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing, because I know that we do have a couple of public hearings on our agenda. For the public hearing matters, there will be an opportunity for you to come and speak to those during the public hearing. So this is an opportunity for anybody who'd like to come and address any matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward to address any matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing? I'd ask you to come forward and come to the presenter's table. You can introduce yourselves and take it away. Sure, if you'd like any documentation, you can certainly set it on the X marks spot on the table in front of you, and our overhead camera can pick that up. There is a focus button. If you just want to continue. Sir, I'll slide to the bill.
So within this proposal, we evaluated the highest, obviously, you're all aware that it's a two envelope system in which 65% is technical based and 35% is price based. Our contracted amount is also published there, which is $75,000,000 over than the next qualified consultant. On the 68th Avenue, which is a very similar situation. Recommendation letter was issued on two committee, didn't get to committee, but the evaluation was published. So we were evaluated at 92.8, which is, as far as I'm aware, is one of the highest evaluations in city history. Full five points, just about a full five points ahead of the second place consultant and a value of $76,000 lower. With those following that, according to your agenda items, the sidewalk program was recommended to be terminated and the award was recommended to another consultant, and we were actually disqualified on the project. The rationale for all this was to do with Core Certification, which is a certificate of recognition. That recognizes safety requirements within Alberta and the Alberta Construction Safety Association. It does not supersede OHS guidelines, which we are compliant with. But it does certify employers greater than 10 employees to do work within that, the ACSA, under that recommendation. There is a small employer certification, but it's not mentioned anywhere. Within city documentation, C-COR, which typically we would have qualified for practice. We understand that Core is the issue here, and we are currently not a certified company due to the fact that it has been removed and, see, that type of cap we went from.
C-COR.
Of course, we're currently in process. Typically, we would work through these types of situations with the administration. However, we were not given an opportunity to provide necessary documentation and have actually not been notified of defaults or identification as to why we have been terminated or going to be terminated. We are currently underway with our Core Certification, and direct contact with the ACSA has informed us that we could have our temporary letter of certification for Core within four to six weeks. So a fairly short timeline, likely less than the time it will take us to sign contracts with the city of Grand Prairie. The city does not require Core in their RFP documents to be evaluated in proposals, therefore we feel we cannot be disqualified due to the Core Certification. I brought with me the actual wording within the Core Certification, so we have this as necessary. We can, if you want, put it basically says for the proposal, bidders are encouraged to register a certificate of recognition. We've seen it on several projects before and never had that come up. We are pursuing that in the direction of that document. We've also debriefed with the administration on several projects that we've done in the past, and I'm sure we'll see where that we've done a lot of work within the city of Grand Prairie. We have done a lot of work and have debriefed on. So anytime we're successful or unsuccessful on a project, we sit down with the administration and determine how we can score higher. So we've never been disqualified for Core, and we've never been questioned as to why it wasn't there. So it's been fairly public. It's never been raised by administration on any proposal prior to this or anything that ever been done. A couple things.
Yes, Mayor and counsel. So we currently have, as you know, a signed contract on the sidewalk program. We've commenced work on that project. We're well into it. We were requested to stop working on it once Core Certification became an issue, and we did do that. Even though we have a signed contract and could continue working, we stopped working at the request of administration. We're being told, or we understand, that the reason the contract is being disqualified or terminated or proposed to be terminated is because of Core. And we actually disagree that that's not a breach of our contract. The contract's been signed. We provided all the documentation requested of us before signing. The city signed it, we signed it, and we think that's a valid contract. So then, that brings us to the 68th Avenue project. So nearly a month ago, just before that recommendation was supposed to go before committee, we were advised that this question about Core came up. So we were told that this Core Certification could affect both projects. We do disagree with that, that the RFP, as Scott indicated, clearly says that it's recommended that consultants pursue Core Certification. It's also clear on the city's website, in terms of award process, for projects that the city has out to the public, that even today, this website says that Core Certification is, we are encouraged, consultants and engineers, to get Core Certification. It's not required. It goes on to say that the prime contractor and the subcontractors are required to have it. It's very clear. So it's our position that the tender document or the RFP document is contradictory to itself and that we, in good faith with the city of Grand Prairie, provided a proposal that meets your requirements. We were evaluated very highly for both projects, and we believe that we should get that work. So we would ask two things of council tonight. The first is why you would disqualify a qualified bidder, the highest rated qualified proponent? There are two additional clauses in the RFP document that would give the city remedy in this situation. If, we don't agree that Core is an issue, but if you believe Core is an issue, there are two other sections of the document that we can put forward. 4.4.9 allows the city to, if it's in its best interest, to waive any irregularity or insufficiency in any proposal and accept the proposal deemed best in the interest of the city of Grand Prairie. So that clause is at your disposal. There's another one in 4.4.16 that says that anything that doesn't comply within the document, once the contract is signed, we have 30 days to produce that information after it's been given notification and writing. It further says that the city can give an extension to that 30 days. So our question is, given the fact that those remedies are available to the city, why would you disqualify us and cost the citizens of Grand Prairie over $150,000 in extra fees? The second thing that we'd like to ask of the city, of the council, is to not vote in favor of the recommendations put forward under 9.4.2 and 9.4.3 and allow us to complete the projects that we fairly won competing in your RFP system. Thank you.
Anything further, gentlemen? Don't see any questions around the table. Thank you. Thanks very much for being here to present today. I know that I did see some other hands with some folks that would like to come forward to make a presentation, so we'll just let the gentleman leave the presenter's table. So when you come in, please come, sit in front of one of the microphones if possible, makes life a little bit easier, and just introduce yourself and anybody else that's at the table with you, and let us know why you're here. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Geisbrecht.
Please have a seat.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Geisbrecht. I don't get too distracted by the folders quite yet. I've been, was born and raised Grand Prairie. My great-grandparents actually came to the area and created a log cabin, you know, out of mud and trees in the area, so I'm very vested in this area. And I just wanted to come and first say thanks to all of you guys for doing your job. I'm super thankful for you guys putting the passion that you do into making our city a better place. And so I have questions and concerns, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm not coming in here as a complainer. I'm coming in here because I believe questions are good. Questions produce, you know, answers and things, so. So who is familiar with my name already? No? You, you are. I started a petition in Grand Prairie asking city council to look at the fluoride issue. I realize I'd like to come in here and say I'm not a health authority, so I'd been thinking about this for quite a while, a couple of years now, and I knew if I came in here just myself presenting my concerns, that there's not much weight to that at all. And so I wanted to get some signatures of other people who are concerned requesting city council to commit to researching hydrofluosilistic acid, which is our fluoridating chemical right now, and to commit to having an information talk with the Aquaterra shareholders so that we can actually look at what's going on in there. I can explain a little bit of why I'm concerned. This is not me just being a mom searching the mom blog sites. I love numbers, I love stats, and I've tried to go to resources that are reliable and dig further to primary resources, primary research, not just he says, she says, because they say I should believe them. So I have a present for you, Mr. Given. Are you a Crest or are you a Colgate kind of guy? Colgate, all right. And a brand new toothbrush? I wanted to keep this not too heavy, so. Brand new, just out of the case here? No, no. May I approach the front? I don't know if there's something.
Sure, you can absolutely pass that on. Typically, into demonstrations. Thank you.
So my question is, would you eat that?
Right now, I don't feel the need.
At home, if you had that toothpaste there, would you be willing to eat that?
Sure.
Yes?
Yes.
What's the general response accepted by society?
I think it's an unusual thing to eat.
Yeah, yeah. And the packaging on this label says that you should not swallow toothpaste, and if you swallow more than, other, okay, this one's not helping me out, but other labels say that if you swallow more than a pea-sized amount, you should contact poison control. So generally, so more than a pea-sized amount, it tells you to contact poison control. That is 0.3 milligrams of fluoride, and the reason being is because people recognize that fluoride is a pharmaceutical, and it is also in excess quantities known as a poison. So I made a guess, at your weight being approximately 190 pounds, I hope that's not too far off, but I did some calculations, and, so here's my toothbrushes. I didn't feel like buying 53 toothbrushes, brand new, but, so there's one set. Two sets. So this is 10, 20, 30, 40, 50. And here's my 53 toothbrushes here. So, according to Health Canada, a six- to nine-month-old baby can drink up to a liter of water per 10 pounds of weight. So if they are using tap water, consuming that amount, they would be the same as you eating 53 toothbrushes worth of toothpaste every day. That concerns me. So this is not me, again, just going on mom blog sites. This is me looking at the math and what adds up and saying, okay, I don't think any human being, when a toothpaste tube says, "Let's not eat the fluoride," should be consuming 53 toothbrushes worth of it every day. And that's per pound, the amount of fluoride that is going into a six-to-nine-month-old baby's body. Again, I know, I realize I'm not a health authority, so in the folders that I gave you, I have given you a copy of the article that I wrote up with the research that I did so that you can see what I looked into and the references that I looked into. And a couple of the sites, or the stats that I got, which is one from Stats Canada, a reliable source. One from WHO, the World Health Organization, a reliable source. One from Harvard Studies, again, a recognized reliable source. One from the EPS, Environmental Protection Society, I believe, again, known as a reliable source. So all I'm asking here is, is not for you, I'd love for you guys to just say, "Let's get fluoride out right now and vote it," but I realize that's not how these things work. I'm asking you guys to, if you'd be willing to accept this information, and commit to researching hydrofluosilistic acid yourselves, and commit to having a fluoride talk where the other shareholders in Aquaterra, like Sex Smith, and I believe Claremont or the county of Grand Prairie are invited to talk about this. Obviously, my personal view on it is that fluoride is not a nutrient, it's not a vitamin, it's not a mineral, it is a pharmaceutical additive. It's not even sodium fluoride, which is the more natural, or calcium fluoride, which is the natural form. This is hydrofluosilistic acid, which is a byproduct of industrial processes added to our water. Oh, yes, and so I don't believe that medication should be added to the water without the consent of every individual in the area. One other thing that caused me concern is that our local medical health officer from Alberta Health Services was approached on this, and he, a local medical professional approached him and said, "Okay, where's the evidence on hydrofluosilistic acid, and where's the evidence saying that it's safe? Would you show it to me?" And the medical health officer said, "No." And so this medical professional in our area said, "Well, could we do some tests on it then to see what is actually in this chemical that we're adding to the water?" The medical health officer said, "No." Then the medical health officer said to him, "You should leave sleeping, quote, 'you should leave sleeping dogs lie.'" And he proceeded to tell him about another medical professional who questioned Alberta Health Services' position on a topic, on a different issue, and was threatened with losing his license. So I love science. I believe science, good science, is based on open questions and encouraging data, not hiding data. When the medical health officer for the Peace Region threatened somebody for asking for evidence of this chemical's safety, that put some pretty big red flags up for me. In general, I believe the fluoridation has been carried on because well-meaning people, this is the information that has been promoted all along. So I hope I haven't been too scattered here and that you guys have heard my concerns, and I'm just wondering if you guys would be willing to commit to talking about what's in our water in the near future.
Did you have anything further?
I, no, just that unless you have any questions.
Absolutely. Any questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in. Thanks very much for the presentation. I'll keep the toothbrush. It's always nice to have extra.
With that?
It's always nice to have extra toothbrushes.
Yeah.
So I'll keep that. Thank you. Thanks very much for the presentation. We deal, just so that you know, we deal with any delegation business at the end of our agenda. And so that's when council would receive your presentation for information or accept any, take any action.
Okay.
So we will, again, call if there's anybody else that'd like to come forward, if anybody else had any presentations for council or wanted to raise an issue for council.
Forgot to mention one thing. So there was, within one month.
I'll ask you to sit down if you're going to say something, because nobody can hear you.
Sorry. So there is 1,232 signatures right now of people requesting that you research this issue.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward, council, to address any matter that's a community-related matter? Again, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing? I'll ask one last time, and then we're going to close that opportunity. I don't see anybody else coming forward, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on to public hearings. We'll start off with item 6.1, the Land Use Bylaw Amendment, C-1260-32, rezoning from RG to RT. I'd call this public hearing to order and look for an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So Land Use Bylaw, C-1260-32, is a rezoning from RG to RT. The subject sites are on 107th Avenue, just north of the hospital. The current zoning is RG, so single-family residential, and the application is to rezone to RT to accommodate multi-attached dwellings up to four units. This, two sites are located in a single-family residential neighborhood, so the surrounding properties are all RG, aside from the hospital to the south, but there is an RT zone a bit further to the east on the other side of 96th Street. This application does have some planning merit in that the sites are close to the city center, where we would want to see an increase in density, and the RT district is intended to create opportunities for infill in older neighborhoods. However, it would be preferable to have the intent of the neighborhood planned out in a long-term plan, such as an area redevelopment plan, rather than doing piecemeal rezoning. There are a few concerns in the neighborhood. Hillside already suffers from parking issues, to the point where the city's instigated a permit parking system, and there's a concern with increasing the density there and aggravating these issues. It's possible that the impact will be mediated by site design, however, when considering rezoning applications, we have to look at the worst-case scenario potential of a rezoning. And at this point, for the maximum density, so that would be eight units, the land use bylaw requires 14 parking stalls. In addition, there are concerns with snow removal in the area. There are currently challenges along 107th Avenue and 96A Street because of all the parking. In addition, the city clears the lane behind the sites, and if the majority of the parking was provided along the lane, it would create some issues with snow clearing. In summary, the application does have planning merit, however, we are concerned about the potential impact of increasing the density in the neighborhood. So because of the parking and snow removal concerns, we're recommending that this item not be given second and third reading. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that introduction. Any questions for administration at this time? Counsel? If not, there will be an opportunity after we go through the public presentation portion. And I don't see anybody. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Just a quick question, Reed, if possible. And the developer decided to make space for all the parking permits. Does that land space actually accommodate the extra parking spaces, or is it just simply not possible to put the parking in that area without having street parking?
It is possible. It's dependent on site design. Unfortunately for rezoning, we're not able to consider the actual site design. We just have to consider the context and what the zoning allows for. But, you know, there could be good design that would accommodate these issues, or there could be terrible design that makes them worse. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. I don't see any other questions, so I'll open the delegation portion of the agenda. I'd ask anyone who would wish to speak in support of this application to come forward. Anybody that'd wish to speak in support of this application? Please make yourself welcome, introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Councilmen, council ladies, I'm Mark Markot. I own the parcel of Land Use Bylaw. Thank you, Mayor Given, councilmen, council ladies. I'm Mark Markot. I own the parcel of land in question. I've spent a great deal of time, I've been doing developing for the last three years in Grand Prairie, I guess. A little short background, I've been in Grand Prairie since 1972, so I'm a long-term resident. Got into developing about three years ago. I have a particular style that I like to develop. Grand Prairie needs rental market, but it also has a niche that needs to be filled. These lots in particular, when you're asking about the parking, the, these particular lots in, in particular are 140 feet deep. Standard lots are 100 feet deep. Hillside area typically are 120 feet deep. These are 140. With that, the parking becomes an absolute non-issue. While Mr. Deroche is correct, it does allow up to four units per lot. My intent is actually to build something of this nature. I believe this fits with, within the neighborhood. It would be a a good fit, as it portrays a single-type family residence. It doesn't look commercialized or anything of that sort. It's a higher end. The reason I'm applying for this particular rezoning in this particular neighborhood is the fact that with this hospital moving to its new location, the existing hospital will be maintained with Alberta Health Services, et cetera. I'm looking at putting in something that brings into the neighborhood a higher-end tenant. What's not showing on here, these particular units, although it is a three-plex, with three garages, you have your three parking stalls inside the garages, plus three in front of it. These units are up to 2,100 square feet. So, show, show me somebody who's gonna be paying rent for 2,100 square feet, that's lower income. This is designed specifically for professionals. I'm trying to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood by building something that fits within that neighborhood, while maintaining the city's mandate of trying to increase density in downtown core. That's what I'm trying to, that's what my proposal's for. Dealing with Mr. Deroche's information, I agree, the parking in that area has been a problem in the past. The issue here, I don't think is there because of the 140-foot-deep lot. I have six up front. If necessary, it would be very easy to put three more in the back. I could, the city's requirement is 1.5 per unit. I could have three per unit, and still have yard space, still have greenery. So, I think that handles the, the parking, as well as the snow removal, 'cause there wouldn't be any street parking. That wouldn't be unnecessary. Other than that, the only other item he raised in his report was a social impact changing the character of the area. Again, uh, I own the property there. It's already rental property. The one next door is a rental property. Several other on that street are already rental properties. One block in any direction, you have four-plexes, eight-plexes. This is the only street that doesn't have multifamily on it in that entire neighborhood. So, I don't think it would change the character in any way, shape, or form. As a matter of fact, what I, what I'm proposing, I'm hoping, would up that neighborhood, would help keep, would revitalize it.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks very much for the presentation. Council, any questions for the delegation? I have one. Mr. Markot, I appreciate seeing the elevation. That's obviously just proposed, and at the zoning stage, uh, the city doesn't have an ability to sort of control that part. Did you ever consider, uh, proceeding with a, what's called a direct-control district? And if, if not, why not?
Okay, um, what happened is, I spend a lot of time, you know, as I know, I've talked with you several times about what the city needs, et cetera. I spent several times with planning and development, which I even received email back from Mr. Deroche today. I'll just read you the one line. It says, "Generally applicants do not consult with us so much..." "Applicants do not consult with us so much after circulation." Basically, the point is, I, I spent my time looking through this. In the discussions, I said, "What if I did this? What if I did this? What, what?" I'm new to this. Okay, that's, I've only been in this for three years, so I've never applied to rezoning before. In the consultation with planning and development, RT seemed to be the best option. DC was not, explained to me that as a potential option, it was, "Here's the various things you pick." So, I went with, that's why I went with RT.
And, so-
Just 'cause I wasn't going for eight-plex, I wasn't going for high-density, I was going for medium, up to core.
And so, and so, what's your intention of what to build? So that we can hear from administration what the zone allows. What's your intention? What are you looking to build? I thought, I think I heard you say three-plex.
This is a three-plex.
So, a single three-plex on the site.
Mr. Deroche said that they don't look at the plot plans to determine parking, et cetera. Yet I was requested by them to pay $750 to have a plot plan done to, to show them that the parking would fit. And then they're saying parking is a problem. But, this plan shows parking, I'd have six parking stalls up front, not in the alleyway. But if necessary, very easy, they have planning saying, as part of your development permit, you must put some parking, additional parking in the back alley.
Okay. That's the only questions I had. Any, uh, other questions from council? Seeing nothing. Uh, no, Counselor Tool?
Just thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just one question. I just wanna reassure myself. You said 2,100 square foot per, per unit?
The, they range from 1,500 to 2,100.
Thanks, Counselor Tool. Mr. Markot, uh, the way that we do our public hearings, we have anybody in favor, uh, then we will hear from anybody that might be in opposition. But I just wanna clarify that you've got the information that you're looking to get in front of council. Anything else you wanna say? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak in support, in support of the application? Anybody else that'd care to come forward to speak in support of the application? Uh, if not, then I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to come forward to speak in opposition to the application. Please come forward, and just like with everybody else, please have a seat in front of the microphone there, and, uh, we'll intro, you can introduce yourself, and, uh, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Gord Switzer. I live on 107th Avenue, just east of the proposed, uh, rezoning. We've canvassed the neighborhood. Nobody's in favor of multifamily dwellings on our neighborhood. And, uh, some of them are here tonight. Some could not make it. In January, this is our fourth trip to City Hall to maintain our neighborhood. Somebody who's recognized me. And in January, we were here to defeat, uh, parking meters. Previous to that, we were here to alleviate the parking, which is complied with, with the resident parking tags. Then we were late in the rezoning of that one building halfway down the block, which is now an office building rather than a halfway house through five south. And, uh, we're concerned, and, uh, Mark indicated that there's not gonna be on-site parking, or on-street parking, with his design. But I don't think his design is gonna look well in a single-family dwelling. It'd look better in a Carriage Lane. I realize that, uh, abandoned house should be gone, but I don't think that's the way to, it should be gone. We've lived in our house, it'll be 50 years in, uh, July, July the first, and, uh, we like our neighborhood the way it is. And, uh, we're concerned that if we get one multifamily development in there, houses across the street are getting old, the people are getting older in them, and it'll spread like a disease. Traffic is going to be increased if you get eight families in a condensed area like that, regardless of the parking. And if we go to sell our property, I think the value, I mean, the estimated value isn't gonna change, but the selling price is gonna change with multifamily dwellings on there. That's all I have to say.
Well, before you, before, thank you.
Some questions?
Absolutely. We'll just make, give that opportunity to council if they had any questions for you, Mr. Switzer. I don't see anybody ringing in. Uh, I've said that before, and people ring in at the last minute. But I don't see anybody ringing in, so it looks like you're off the hot seat. Thanks very much for being here.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward to speak in regard to this, uh, public hearing? Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward? I'll ask one last time if there's anybody else that'd like to come forward and, during, as a delegation, to speak to this rezoning application? I don't see anybody else coming forward, council. Do we have any last questions for administration before I close the public hearing and we move on to discussion and debate arising? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given, to administration. I know, uh, the city's working on a infill and, uh, I guess, intensification strategy. So, my question is, when will that be? When will council receive that? And will it inform a council with respect to, uh, planning and strategies, uh, for that purpose?
Mr. Deroche?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The infill strategy is actually focused on downtown, and it's more geared towards the actual downtown core and not Hillside. So, it won't have implications for this neighborhood. Um, we're expecting to have a preliminary report for June. Um, Brian Glavin is heading the project, and I'm not sure what his deadlines are.
Thank you. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a point of clarification. I was wondering if you could tell me why this didn't come to committee first, why directly to council?
I think I can answer that. Counselor Clayton, uh, city council handles all rezoning through public hearing.
Right.
Actual development proposals go to the committee level, so for a specific building.
Okay.
So, the rezoning will always come here, and it's the, the actual construction of a building that goes through the committee.
Thanks.
Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Administration, is there a height restriction in that, in that zone that we have now? Like, if a single house was to be built, or versus a multifamily facility, is there restrictions?
Mr. Deroche?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Given. Sorry, I don't know the restrictions off the top of my head. I'll just pull them up here. It's, uh, 8.5 meters is the maximum height for a single-family unit.
Is that the answer you're looking for, Counselor?
So, are you asking the comparison to RT as well?
Yes, if there was, uh, a change.
It's the same, two stories.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Questions or comments? No. Seeing none, then I will, uh, close the public hearing. Oh, Counselor Logan, and we'll move to business rising. Okay. Uh, Counselor Logan, do you wanna?
I would, uh, like to move that second reading, uh, be given to bylaw C 1260 dash 32, for the amendment to the Land Use Bylaw. I make that motion because, uh, the recommendation should not be in the negative ever. Uh, it will be my intention that when it comes up, that I will actually vote against my own motion.
Counselor Logan, sure, I appreciate that. It's, uh, it is a little unusual for us to have a recommendation that's framed in the negative. Um, and so, uh, I appreciate administration is giving their recommendation, uh, that they don't support the application, but, uh, maybe Counselor Logan, just to eliminate that awkwardness, if you'd like to make the motion in the positive. Oh, sorry, okay. Sorry, I thought, I thought I heard you say "not." Okay, so, uh, your motion is-
I was wrong.
That's okay. Uh, so the motion is, uh, that second reading be given. Um, and I appreciate your, uh, your statement of your intent not to support that. Open for discussion and debate. Motion for second reading. I'll just, uh, enter in to say that, uh, this is a challenging situation, because, uh, I believe that new construction would absolutely be a benefit to the neighborhood. I believe, uh, the new construction even as proposed could likely be a benefit. The challenge is that it comes in the absence of a plan. Some of our neighborhoods have area redevelopment plans. The city could be and should be considering a residential infill strategy. And, uh, and/or, um, the direct-control district could have, uh, more details that would give the neighborhood, uh, administration and council some more comfort about what actually will be developed on the site. So, uh, I would like to be able to support the, uh, like to be able to support second reading. But I think in the absence of a plan of how the overall redevelopment will go, I, I find it challenging. Any other discussion or debate from council? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote on second reading. So, uh, remember, the mo, the vote, motion was in the positive. Uh, so if you wish to not have second reading, then you would vote to defeat it. If you wish to move forward, uh, with the proposal, then you would vote in favor. So, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, uh, so second reading does not pass. Counselor Logan?
Yes, I'd move that first reading be rescinded.
Okay, thanks very much. So, Counselor Logan, a motion to rescind first reading of bylaw C 1260 dash 32. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. There is, uh, one additional piece of business arising, council, and I think that's the matter of the, uh, long-term prospects of redevelopment in the Hillside area. Could I ask a council member to refer that to the appropriate standing committee? Because I don't think it's reasonable to expect that that area won't redevelop. I think council needs to start to have some discussions about what our strategy will be to manage appropriate redevelopment. So, Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given, I'd like to make that motion that, uh, we look at an area structure plan, uh, and bring that information to the appropriate committee.
Sure, maybe, maybe we could just refer the issue of redevelopment of the Hillside area to the appropriate standing committee.
Okay.
Administration may have other recommendations on the right way to address that or have that conversation. Okay, thanks very much for that, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion, on the referral? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Okay. So, move on to our next, uh, public hearing, which is Land Use Bylaw Amendment, C 1260 dash 29. This is an amendment to a DC 9, Direct Controlled 9, uh, district regarding outdoor storage. Mr. Deroche?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, C 1260 dash 29, is a text amendment to DC 9. Um, the subject site is on 102nd Street, towards the north of the city. Um, the proposed amendment is to allow for outdoor storage in conjunction with an auto body repair shop. Um, and the proposed amendment will also clarify the wording of DC 9, as there's currently some confusion as to when and where outdoor storage is allowed and the type of screening required. So, DC 9 currently allows for outdoor storage in conjunction with other uses, such as a general contractor or a retail use. Automotive equipment and sales and repairs major was not included in DC 9 when it was originally written, and therefore, it was, um, prevented from having outdoor storage by omission. Um, the subject property is adjacent to a contractor with an outdoor storage yard. The properties just to the east also have outdoor storages yards, and the automotive minor uses a bit to the south all have outdoor storage yards as well. So, it would be unfair to exclude this application from having outdoor storage. Um, so, in summary, the proposed amendment would be compatible with the site context, and it would clarify discrepancies in the DC 9 district. So, administration recommends that bylaw C 1260 dash 29 be given second reading, and that it also be given third reading.
Thanks very much, Mr. Deroche. Any questions for administration at this point? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, Reed, would you just speak to the talks about correcting inconsistencies with the requirements for fences? Give me a little more detail, please.
Um, there were, thank you, Mayor Given, there were two contradictory clauses. There was one item that suggested that you could have, um, chain-neck fencing with lathe screening in conjunction with outdoor storage, and there was another statement that said you couldn't. And the original intent was to allow for, for, um, chain-neck fence with lathe screening- And the original intent was to allow for chain fence with left screening with outdoor storage, but the wording just was inconsistent, and so we'll be clarifying that.
Thank you. Any further questions for administration at this point? Seeing nobody in the queue, then I will start the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, and I would ask anyone here to speak in support of or in favor of the proposed changes to come forward. Welcome, please introduce yourselves for council on the record.
Welcome back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members and administration. My name is Wade Greentree, and I'm here on behalf of my client, J. Adams Auto Body, and I want to thank Mr. Drosh for all his hard work and working with me and my client in preparing this document, making all these revisions that we had to make to make this smoother process for them and their building. As Mr. Drosh mentioned in his report, amending the bylaw and making the revisions as mentioned will allow for the outdoor storage necessary for the normal operations of an auto body repair business, remove some of the textual challenges that were in the bylaw, allow my client to pave the parking lot in the back on an as-needed basis, and will eliminate any future issues for both planning in the city as well as the client. I want to thank council in advance for their consideration of this matter, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks very much, Mr. Greentree. Any questions for the delegation? See anybody ringing in? It's like there aren't any questions, Mr. Greentree. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
I'll ask if there's anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak in favor or in support of the application? I don't see anybody else moving, so I'll ask if there's anyone who'd care to come forward to speak in opposition to the application? Again, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? I don't see anybody coming forward, so I will ask if there's any final questions for administration? Seeing none, then Counselor Clayton, I think I saw you ring in. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that bylaw C-1260-29 be given second reading, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Open for discussion and debate, of course, on second reading. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. I think I'm looking for one more, counsel, thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Clayton?
I'd move that bylaw C-1260-29 be given third reading, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. That handles all of our public hearing business. We have no items of unfinished business tonight, so that would take us to the reports section. We've moved item eight point one, land use bylaw amendment C-1260-39, rezoning from IG to CA. I would look for a brief introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So C-1260-39 is an application to rezone a property on the north end of the city from general industrial to commercial arterial in order to accommodate a proposed development. We recommend that this item be given first reading and that the date of the public hearing be set as June 1st.
Thanks very much, Mr. Drosh. I'll look for a motion for first reading. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I move that Monday, or sorry, bylaw C-1260-39 being an amendment to the land use bylaw be given first reading.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading? I try every time. I will start the vote. Thank you. First reading carries. Counselor Thiessen, if you'd like to carry on with the time?
Sure. I also move that Monday, June 1st, 2015, at 6:30 PM at City Council Chambers be established as the date, time and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion as to date, time and location as proposed? That one we're allowed to have discussion on. Seeing none, though, I will call for the vote on date, time and location as proposed. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. That handles all of our reports and would take us into committee business, starting with nine point one, the municipal government day team meeting, and Counselor Radburn, I think you handled that for, stepped in to help out.
I did, thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the municipal government day team meeting held April 20th, 2015.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Everyone's had a chance to review those, any errors or omissions, anything we wanted to catch? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That set of minutes is adopted. Counselor Radburn, anything you wanted to highlight from our force?
No, I think actually the two act, the action items, we actually passed last council meeting. This is just to ensure that the minutes get into the record, and we discussed planning, and we're having another committee meeting two weeks prior to municipal government day. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. We'll move on to item nine point two, community growth committee meeting from April 21st. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the community growth committee meeting held April 21st, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes as proposed? I don't see anybody ringing in, so we'll have the vote. Thank you. That motion carries to adopt those minutes. Counselor O'Toole?
I've got one motion to make. I move the council approve revisions to policy 208, the revolutionary, revolution place advance of ticket proceeds policy. To speak on that, it was just a number of days of the event being held and the amount of money that we've requested, and it's been brought up to committee twice, and we're wanting to pass it now.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate from council? I don't see anybody ringing in. If not, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor O'Toole, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, we had a report given by Economic Development Officer here in City Hall on the Public Utility Lots Program update, and it was a pretty in-depth report, and the committee accepted that for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Move to the Community Living Committee from April 21st. Guess who it is? Counselor Radburn? Counselor Clayton, did you have a question?
I just had a comment on the, just a typo there on the Public Utility Lot Program, how it refers to it as the Public Utility Log Program. Might want to change that.
That might have been in the old days when we had public bonfires, I guess. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Radburn, the Community Living Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held April 21st, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like everything's in order? We don't have any logs in the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counselor Radburn, it doesn't look like you had any business arising. Do you want to highlight what happened in that meeting?
I certainly would like to, thank you. We had two presentations, one from John Howard Society, particularly with respect to their Tapano Youth Center, and also a presentation from Pards in terms of this program, Pards programming that we support through FCSS funding. We talked about online community connection, and there was a motion made that we kind of go to the next steps where with more consultation in terms of how it might work, talking with the general public and potential partners in that project, and, and come back to committee with a report that would also outline some costing, because at this point we don't have anything in the budget, so we felt that we needed to do that due diligence before we proceed with the project.
Thanks very much, Counselor.
Next one was Leisure Center, of course. People are sure aware of the recent report that was tabled. We again asked administration for some more information. We're looking at identifying costs attributed to the current aquatic design, look at alternate serial scenarios for what could be delivered within the $11 million budget, and identify any opportunities to add aquatics needs identified in the aquatic facility needs assessment within those dollars that we've already committed. So that will come back, and I think the intent was to come back to a full committee or full council when we were all there so that we can receive that information and then decide on an action forward. And finally, we received a response from, that, from Alberta Culture and Tourism. We had asked about, we had some questions with respect to arts grant funding and regulation of amateur and professional mixed martial arts, and the motion from the committee was that we refer that to our strategic priorities, next strategic priorities session, where we can look at our advocacy priorities and what steps we need to take next.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. That'd take us to the Community Safety Committee meeting from April 28th. Counselor Radburn? Did you do that as well? Holy cow.
I would move the council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held April 28th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council award tender T-30-32-552-15, 2015 Road Rehabilitation Overlay Program Phase III to Wapiti Sand and Gravel Limited in the amount of $1,946,606.10, exclusive of GST as the lowest bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I would move that council award RFP-16-552-15, 68th Avenue, Twinning and Eastbound Bridge to Bearstone and Associates in the amount of $1,46,387, exclusive of GST as the lowest bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. It's obviously is one of the items that was referenced during the public delegation. I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council terminate the RFP-17-552-15, Two-Year Engineering Consultant Services, 2015, 2016 Sidewalks and Trails Program Contract with Helix Engineering Limited.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn, as with the previous. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just if administration can advise me, this contract's already been signed, and at what stage we are, how much work's been done in regards to this project?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. That's correct. The contract has been signed. Some work has been performed, relatively minor work, however, some, some work has been already performed, and that work has to be paid if the motion proceeds, and I don't know if Christine has more details. So it's relatively minor, minor work has been performed.
Okay. Counselor Clayton? We'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council award RFP-17-552-15, Two-Year Engineering Consultant Services, 2015, 2016 Sidewalks and Trail Program to ISL Engineering and Land Services Limited in the amount of $429,934, exclusive of GST as the lowest bidder meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Call for the votes. Thank you. That motion carries. Anything else? So, sorry, you're not finished. Another item of business, I was about to ask for anything else.
Thank you. I'd move council direct administration to implement amendments to policy 3275 Land Development to collect securities in the form of a subdivision bond to cover obligations under a development agreement, with the exception of transportation off-site levies, which shall be paid or secured by a letter of credit. This motion is something that UDI has been advocating and, and speaking with us about for a while now, and so this provides another, some flexibility in terms of how that agreement can, can be covered.
Thank you. Counselor Radburn, any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now I can ask if there's anything else on that agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. We did also distribute or award safe growth matching grants. We also spoke about receive for information and report relative to the Evergreen Park funding request for backup generators. We had a winter wrap-up report from Mr. Carroll, and we had an update on the transportation service review. And we received a letter from CN that confirmed that they had shared information with Chief Daniele with respect to dangerous goods that may be traffic being on trains within city limits.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn, and thanks for stepping in to handle while we were a little bit short on the bench, so to speak. We've moved to the Corporate Services Committee meeting from April 28th, and Counselor O'Toole, I think you handled that one for us.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held April 28th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, item nine point five point one, unaudited financial statements for December 31st, 2014. I move the council approve the transfer of $118,945.51 to the Financial Stabilization Reserve as per policy 338, the operating surplus policy.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on essentially the council, city's year-end financial statements? Seeing none, just note that at the committee meeting, I asked administration that surplus, what it represents in terms of a percentage of the city's overall operational budget to get a, so we could have a sense of how close they hit the mark, and Mr. Anderson informed me that it's like 0.1% of the city's operating budgets. That's pretty darn close to right on the button, as I think you're going to find on big numbers like that, so congratulations, Mr. Anderson, and to the rest of the city organization for being so close there. See anybody else in the queue for discussion or debate? So I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I have one more. Tender T-05999-15 Photocopier System Requirements. I move council award this tender Photocopier System Requirements to High-Tech Business Systems in the amount of $289,241.10, exclusive of GST as the lowest bidder meeting specifications. And if I can just talk a little bit about this, they are not a whole bunch of the same copiator, cop, photocopiers. They are photocopiers that are deemed the most efficient for the departments that require them. So some are going to be bigger, some will be smaller, some will have color, some will have black and white. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
And nine point five point three, Aquaterra New Non-Voting Shareholders. I move council approve the principles for considering new non-voting Aquaterra shareholders as recommended.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything else you wanted to highlight in that meeting?
There was a number of updates of unaudited financial statements, or sorry, audited financial brought to committee, and we received information from the reporting auditors on all of them, so thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, and thanks for stepping in there to handle that meeting. We have no items of correspondence tonight, so that would take us to delegation business. And we look for any motions arising. I believe we had two delegations, the first of which I think was specific to some items that were on our agenda, and so we could have a motion to receive that first presentation from Helix Engineering for information. Counselor Radburn? Councilor Radburn?
Yes, I would move that we receive the delegations presentation for information, please.
Sure. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then we had our second delegation, Ms. Keesrick. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we recommend administration to come back, I need some help with some wording on this motion, to possibly bring information back to the appropriate committee regarding the implications of fluoridication in our water system. I don't really know how we want this motion. I'd like some information back from administration in regards to the presentation today to the appropriate committee.
So you're just looking to refer the issue to the appropriate standing committee?
Yep.
So a motion of referral to refer the position provided during the delegation to the appropriate standing committee? Fair enough. Open for discussion or debate. Councilor Logan?
Thank you. I, in my years at the table here, I've had this issue come forward, I think, three prior times with the same arguments being made on the health implications of fluoridation. We're in charge of city government, we don't really have the medical expertise, and we've always sent it on to officials that could be much, in a much better position to actually look at it as opposed to directing city administrators who deal with city matters to go and look into this particular issue. I think they came to the wrong people today. I think they should be going to the people that can speak to that issue. And to try and direct some follow-up action to our own administration who aren't involved in the healthcare field, I think is a waste of their time and a waste of the city's resources. So I would move we receive this information, this motion for information.
Well, we have, we have a motion on the floor to refer, so either in opposition and then we call-
In opposition to that, to the, to the motion, and I hope council will save a lot of nonsense and vote no.
Thanks, Council Logan. Council Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I'm gonna speak in favor of the motion. In fact, Jack beat me to the punch by about two seconds, probably. I think this is an important conversation. It is a polarizing conversation that, that we need to have with our community, but we're not the health authorities, but technically, we're the shareholder water authorities. So whatever goes in the water, we have a say in that. So we need to be involved in this conversation. We need to look at the pros and the cons of hydrofluoric acid. Sorry, it's a really long tongue-twisting word. But I, I think we would be not doing our due diligence if we didn't look at both the benefits and the health negative impacts, if there are any, and bring this conversation not just to council and to our community, but to our shareholders as well. So I will fully support this motion.
Thanks very much, Council Logan. Or sorry, Council Thieson. I recognize Council Logan next.
I should, I should have maybe added that in those various times in the past that we have got it off our agenda and onto an appropriate agenda. There was twice that I can remember that we did actually refer to Aqua Terra for, for their information, and that's where it went. I mean, it's not an issue that we dealt with ourselves after that.
Thanks, Council Logan. Sorry, Council Clayton, I saw you in the queue there.
Thanks. Correct me if I'm wrong, the discussion at committee level could offer some direction, therefore to go as one of the shareholders of Aqua Terra to in turn look for discussion from other shareholders, and collectively then there would be direction provided to Aqua Terra. And at this point, previous council has simply presented it as information to Aqua Terra with no direction.
Sorry, you asked a question-
So, in the past, as Counselor Logan refers, that it has gone to Aqua Terra. From what I understand, in the past, anytime city council has brought it to Aqua Terra, it's basically been for source of information, not as a collective direction from the other shareholders. So this committee discussion could be, could be providing direction to discuss with other shareholders and collectively provide direction to Aqua Terra.
I think the committee wouldn't provide direction on behalf of council. The committee would have a discussion about what it wanted to do, and then ultimately anything would have to come back to council for us to state a position of the City of Grand Prairie committee.
Fair enough. But in opposition to Counselor Logan's discussion, I don't think it's really been taken to that next step, as council has not given direction to Aqua Terra as one of the shareholders. That's why I think the importance of having it at committee at this point.
Thanks, Council Clayton. I'll just enter the queue to say that I won't be supporting the motion for a similar reason as Counselor Logan, it comes to resource allocation for me. There are any range of health-related matters that we could investigate or explore. Everything from the impact of wireless communications to, to the types of lighting in city buildings, to emissions, to pesticides. And in any of those issues, I believe we would refer to the appropriate authority to say what is currently approved for use in Canada. And I don't believe that I see this issue as any different than any of those. So I'm simply not willing to dedicate city resources, or council resources frankly, to discuss and debate this issue, because I don't believe that it's, I believe that we have clear information from all of the appropriate authorities that the City of Grand Prairie would rely on in any matter that's related to the use of any, the health impacts of the use of any of our products. So I won't be supporting the motion, because I don't believe that it's an effective use of city resources or of council time. Council Thieson?
Well, I'm sorry, Bill, but I have to disagree. I believe that the health of our citizens is of utmost importance to anything that council does, because it involves decisions that we make. We are directly affecting whatever goes into the water by not having the discussion and combining, like, allowing this to happen if it is a poison. I'm not stating that it is, but I'm saying that this conversation needs to be had, and it's not a waste of council time or, or city resources at all. We need to look at what's best for our citizens. We need to have this conversation within the community, within our shareholders and throughout, and we need to allow their voice to come through, and we are that representative of that voice. Now, I, and I take a slight offense, not much offense, to the approving health authorities, because there's much division even in those approving health authorities that debates whether hydrofluoric acid is really good for human consumption and to what quantities. So you go to Alberta Health Services, you go to Capital Health, they're gonna tell you different sides of the story. So, I mean, we need to have this discussion, we need to decide what our community wants, like, and that's why, again, I'm sorry that I have to debate you on this, but I think it's an important conversation that we need to have within our community.
This table is absolutely the right place to have a debate, so you never have to apologize for that. There's no expectation that council is on the same page on every issue, and that's why we all get a chance to express our opinion. Council Logan?
I just want to ensure that people understand that this debate has happened. It has happened in a very small fashion around the council and at least once at a committee table. Been referred on to Aqua Terra, and one time farther back before Aqua Terra was formed to the health authorities, I forget whether it was, I think it was the health unit that it was referred to. It has been debated, discussed by those boards, and their positions have come out similar to the position that we still have today, which is, it's something that assists people as opposed to poisons them. And I think we're fine to have the argument, but don't start off by misrepresenting the facts.
Thanks, Council Logan. Council O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm at ends here. I, I understand there's a concern from residents of Grand Prairie and maybe possibly other communities that are in the Aqua Terra program. If we were to accept this information for report, delegation, is there any way that we could assure that we could get a comment back from Aqua Terra that they have at least looked at it and give us an opinion? I know we're not health. I don't, I agree with you. I think we have those people in place, but I would like to have the people that provide us water service to give us their opinion somewhere, somewhere in either committee or council chambers.
Well, Council O'Toole, I mean, if we receive for information, that's essentially taking no action. And so we either have to, we can receive for information, say thank you for the presentation, but we're not following up, is the essence of that, or we can take an action, which is, you know, either refer it to committee, and at the committee, discuss what action you'd like to take from there, or have council take an action here, but it's sort of either, if you're receiving for information, it's, it's essentially a taking, choosing to take no action at this time. So the motion is pretty specific to refer back to committee for discussion. Thank you. Council Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Just to clarify, we have had Aqua Terra come in, and Baron Mans was standing right at this council table here, and Helen, Counselor Rice had asked him if, with the debate on fluoride, if we should take the fluoride out or what they suggest, and they said they see no need in keeping the hydrofluoric acid in the water system, but that's up to council to decide, quote-unquote, Baron Mans.
Don't see anybody else in the queue? Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Sure. Legislative Services Manager, clarify what exactly we had for the motion? Sorry, I just, I don't see your light come on, on your microphone, so I can't tell if you're live there or not.
Move by Councilor Clayton that the second item that was, that was in the delegation business be referred to the appropriate standing committee. So, pretty basic.
Sure. So, so we're clear, it's a motion of referral to the standing, appropriate standing committee? Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Vote is to refer that to the committee or not? Thank you. That motion does carry, so that item will be referred to the appropriate standing committee. We will move on. I think that was all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion tonight, so that'll take as council member reports, and we'll start with the downtown BRZ. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just some highlights of our April 29th Board of, Board meeting. The topics for discussion included the sizzling summer sidewalk sale, temporary banner signs downtown, alleys and lanes, garbage cans, street furniture, power box wraps, and we received the March 31st financial update statements. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Move on to Grand Prairie Airport Commission. Council O'Toole?
There we go. Thank you very much. Yes, we had a meeting a, last week, on the 23rd, and a couple of the items that came up was the Grand Prairie Airport Commission Skills Matrix. We have some openings in our commission, and there will be a, an ad coming out in the future regarding people to fill those spots. We have a, a matrix of skills that we would like to see, that the people may or may not have, but that was one of the items. As a general update, the, the airport is up seven percent over 2013 for passenger service. So, you know, you see declining activity in other airports. The Grand Prairie one seems to be climbing every year. And with that, we are nearing our cap for federal funding every year, and the, the amount is diminishing every year. So once we hit 500,000 passengers, we will lose that cap. So with that, that's about the only, we did have the audited financial statements looked at, which I mentioned earlier, we brought to committee, and also, yeah, that was it, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Council Radburn, I think you had Grand Spirit Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor Given. April 24th, Grand Spirit Foundation Management Committee meeting. Received update with respect to WCB Partners Injury Deduction. We received a $10,828 refund because of the safe work practices of our staff. Looked at a group benefit policy renewal. We received a letter confirming that we were, Grand Spirit is receiving 19.6 million dollars from Rural Lodge renewal funding for a new project in, in Clermont that is for areas of under 10,000 population. And we received Labor Management Committee meeting update. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. I think that handles all of our council member reports, unless there's anything that was missed. Then we move to council roundtable, and we'll start with Council Thieson. Because I have an expectation that might start us off on a short matter.
A short matter? I was just gone for a month, I got lots to talk about.
Do you have any council-related business to talk about?
Oh, well, I think, yeah, I have, I have a little bit. I just wanted to, for, I just wanted to commend the organizers, the community social development, as well as our, our welcoming and inclusive communities committee, and Tamara's there for putting together a fabulous conference that I had the luxury and opportunity to emcee for the second day of the events. It was a great, it was a great conference on creating, fostering diverse communities within, within our city, and it had lots of participants from across the province that took part in that, and I heard lots of wonderful feedback. So I was really honored to be a part of that event. And I think I would be remiss to not mention something that has everything to do with every council across the province, that tomorrow is voting day, and I think it's very important that no matter what your political stripe, I think Albertans have had their voices heard, and one way or another after the election tomorrow, as long as we all go out and vote, those voices hopefully will be taken into action by whichever government forms our government. So best of luck to all the candidates in our area and across the province, and please, if you're watching, go out and vote.
Council Thieson? Council Logan?
Couple items that I'll mention. One is the Airport Commission that Counselor O'Toole already described. It was a good session, and I appreciated being there. On Friday, the 25th, I attended the art auction. Seemed to be a tremendous turnout. I'm not sure how well they did in the actual sales by the end of the evening, but they certainly put on a very good show, and quite enjoyed it. Sort of tied to that was the, it's not a single event anywhere, but the farewell to Robert Stephen, who came to Grand Prairie as the gallery, the gallery curator. I'm proud to say I was on the hiring team that brought him here. I think he did a fantastic job for the gallery, and I think he did a fantastic job for, for the city. I know that he'll do very well where he is now, back in the dreaded east of the country, but he, he leaves his mark on our, our community. And finally, I attended the flag racing for the day of mourning, people, for workers injured or killed on the workplace, and was very proud to be standing there with the members of CUPI observing that day. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Logan. Council Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I do believe actually our gallery Grand Prairie annual art auction was very successful in terms of a fundraiser as well. Received the, the update next board meeting, but in early indications were that it was the most successful to date, so hopefully that is actually what comes to pass. And secondly, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association, AGM, where we had whatever, all the things you do at AGM. We do have a new vice president, and that would be Don Whiteford. Jason-
Hola.
Hola, is, remains as our president, and we added a new board member, Tim Conrad, is now a board member. Wendy Hargreaves says she's been with us, actually replacing somebody, but she was actually officially voted in as well. And finally, just thanks to our staff for, I attended for most of a couple of days the Fostering Diverse Communities Conference hosted by Grand Prairie Community Development, and recognized Tamara's, not a, not a staff member, but her efforts in terms of leading that. Found it quite informative, and it just, it reminds us of how critical, how important, and how diverse of a community we now are, and everything we can do to make it, to make it even better, I think we should aspire to do. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Radburn. Councilor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I only have a couple things to contribute other than, that's already been mentioned. I thoroughly enjoyed the art gallery, and want to commend the committee and everyone I thoroughly enjoyed the art gallery, I want to commend the committee and everyone involved in putting it on, it was once again a great event. Other than a couple tender openings and a few meetings that were otherwise mentioned, I wanted to thank the Grand Prairie and District Chamber of Commerce for putting on a well-attended, well-moderated, all-candidates forum at GPRC, and as Council Thiessen mentioned, I encourage everyone to get out tomorrow and vote.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Council O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. It's been a pretty exciting couple weeks. I'm going to just start back from last Friday. I attended our second annual city scrub, and it turned out that we've picked up a lot of litter and garbage around the building and the area, a lot, and then we had a barbecue after, and I'd like to thank the staff for coming out and spending their time lunch hour, doing such a great job of cleaning up. I also attended last Friday, the 24th, the Odyssey House Open House tour of the center, and it'll be opened up later this year. They got about one and a half floors, nearly at the probably 80% stage, and another couple floors yet to go yet, so. It looks really nice, and I think it'll be very accommodating. It's a sad situation that we have to build these places, but it's also a nice opportunity to get people started over again in their life. And I got one more here, and that was the, hang on here. I attended the Disabled Transportation Society Board Appreciation Supper, and I was recognized for being a past board member, as well as Mayor Given, and it was quite nice to see some of the, the previous board members and some of the current board members, and the continuation and the growth of this, this board is something that the city really needs. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. I'll be very brief, just highlight a couple of events that I attended where there weren't any of the council members. On the 23rd, I hosted a Coffee with the Mayor, and again, on Saturday, the 25th, hosted another Coffee with Mayor as an opportunity for council, for members of the public to meet with me in an informal setting. On the Saturday morning Coffee with the Mayor, I had three people from Moldova and one person from, oh, I'm forgetting, I've forgotten what background, what country they were, but all four people that attended that day were relatively recent immigrants to Canada. The couple from Europe had a friend who was considering moving to Canada, moving their family to Canada. They first started looking in the Edmonton area, and their friends are now trying to encourage them to consider Grand Prairie, and so they had a significant number of questions, and it seemed as though the gentleman was looking towards Grand Prairie as a place to relocate and bring his family. So that was a really interesting opportunity, happy to see that. Just in terms of the diversity of things that we do on council, that Saturday, I had the Coffee with the Mayor. I went and opened up the monster truck showdown that was at Revolution Place, and then I attended the Prairie Art Gallery art auction. So I managed to go from monster trucks to art to coffee all in the same day, which is, which is pretty cool, but not unusual, actually, for, for what we do on council. And then another event that was, one that I specifically did, was on May the 1st, I had the opportunity to attend the Grand Prairie Rotary Club, the Friday Rotary Club, and present some updates from council on the business of council and some of the things that we see going forward. It was a pleasure to be invited to that Rotary Club to make that presentation. And, oh, sorry, one final thing was I attended the Swinging with the Stars, which is a fundraiser for the Grand Prairie Palliative Care Society, and second year in a row, and they had a fantastic turnout, and good to see the community coming out and supporting something so important as death care. We certainly have a lot of conversation and discussion and commitment to improving our healthcare, but everybody that was there at the event obviously recognized that people need care in, in their death as well, and that it's something that we shouldn't be ashamed over, shy away from, and in fact, we should celebrate and work towards improving people's situation when they're in those difficult times. So certainly want to thank the organizers of that event for putting it on and for everyone who came out to support it. And with that, I'll call our council meeting adjourned.